Together for September 8th, 2022. I'd like to welcome everybody here tonight. Two quick pieces of housekeeping business that I'd like to take care of. Number one, item three on the agenda, old slash new business, the discussion of amendments to the City of Fairhope subdivision regulations. We will not be discussing those at this meeting. We do have a, at the end of the meeting, I believe we will have an executive session. When we have those, that's when our group talks about a pending legal issue and we can go in with our attorney according to state regulations and discuss those issues. We do have to come back to the meeting afterwards and then close the meeting, but we will not have any business after the item E, we will not have any business conducted today. So there's really no reason to stick around after, when we go to the executive session, unless you're just really bored and don't want to go home. The other item is, we have gotten a lot of letters asking about apartments in different areas, 104, 181, and even some to do with one of the B2 rezoning requests today. Just if you hear about apartments, there's nothing on the agenda for apartments today. So I just wanted to, you know, if anybody's here concerned about apartments, you'd be wasting your time sticking around for this meeting. We don't have any, anything to do pro, con, neutral, negative, or positive about apartments today. So with no further ado, item A on our agenda, UR 22.12, a utility review.
No.
Oh, excuse me.
You have the minutes.
Approval of minutes, I skipped that. Approval of minutes from our August 1st meeting. Do I have a, any changes, corrections, or anything that needs to be made? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve as is.
So moved.
Have a motion to approve as is, and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, we're skipping item three and we're back to the 1152.
If you might, I just want to mention, or Secretary.
Oh, excuse me, thank you. Our secretary is at, is not here due to a sickness, but she is going to do the minutes electronically. So we will have the minutes done for our next meeting. So with no further ado, 115211, utility review. Mike?
So this is UR 22.12. It's Cispire Utility Review. It's approximately 5,536 linear feet of buried fiber. On your screen, on the right side, you can see where that location is. The north extent is Mosley Road on County Road 13 down to Fairhope Avenue on County Road 13. This is their metro line. This is the same kind of, same utility reviews that we have been seeing here recently. There is nothing unique about this particular project. Staff does recommend approval of UR 22.12, subject to the following conditions, and these are the same conditions that you have seen previously. I would like to not read all of these out loud. You've had those in your, in your staff reports and in your packets, but if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those on behalf of staff.
Any questions for staff at this time? Does anybody here from Cispire speak to this item? All right, do y'all have anything to add or just here in case we ask some questions?
Where does the state have any questions?
Okay, great. Are there any questions for the applicant at this time?
Nope.
All right, this is not a public hearing, but does anybody from the public have any questions or concerns about this? All right, in that case, commissioners?
Motion, Mr. Chairman, UR 22.12, Cispire. I recommend that we approve, subject to staff recommendations.
I've got a motion to approve, subject to staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And since our secretary is not here physically, if there is, if any vote is not unanimous, we're going to do a roll call vote. But as long as everybody says one thing or another, we won't go through it. So make sure you let your nays be made loud so that I hear if you do have an opposition to anything. Next item on the agenda, a B2 initial zoning and annexation. This is for a piece of property on Spring Run Drive. And just for people in the audience, we have a couple of annexations and zonings coming up. Those are actually finally approved by the city council. We simply make a recommendation because those are actually ordinances. We don't have ordinance power. So we simply make a recommendation to city council and they can choose to do what they would like to themselves. Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir. So this is, the applicant is Natalie Maddox, acting on behalf of the owner, Dynamic Holdings LLC. This is to establish an initial zoning of B2. So this is a conditional annexation concurrent with B2. Property is approximately .6 acres just south of Spring Run Drive and north of Wolf Bay Funeral Home. On your screen, the left side, you can see the zoning map. To the north and south is zoned by City of Fairhope B2, and to the east is zoned R4. On the right is the aerial, currently is just a vacant, vacant parcel. Now, the subject property right now is currently outside of the city limits, and to the west is zoned B2 by Baldwin County, located in the newly approved District 8. As I said, the site is currently undeveloped, but they do have plans of building an office and using the existing drive to the north. Important to note that all conditional annexations to a general zoning is a request only for the zoning. There is no site plan. Future uses, if approved, shall meet the current Fairhope zoning ordinance requirements at that time. For reference, if we need it, is the use table for B2, listing out the allowed uses. Staff's recommendation, or staff recommends case is ZC 22.08, pin number 91211, be approved for conditional annexation with initial zoning of B2 general business district. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on behalf of staff, and I believe there is a representative with us tonight for the applicant.
Any questions for staff at this time? Would anybody like to speak on behalf of Dynamic Holdings? Is anybody here to represent the applicant? All right, in that case, I'll go ahead and open a public hearing at this time. Anybody from the public have any questions, concerns, or comments about the rezoning over off of Spring Run Drive? Not I'll close the public hearing at this time. Commissioners?
I move, we recommend to the city council approval of this, approval of ZC 22.08 for conditional annexation and initial zoning of B2.
I've got a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is ZC 2209, shops at Point Clear.
Thank you, Count, I mean President, Planning Commission, Chairman. Too many meetings. Sure if you're waiting.
Just keep going, baby. This is a straight rezoning request, no site plan attached, no plans for this 21.18 acres. It's, it's kind of associated in rudimentary form with the property to the south, but this is property currently zoned by the, I'm sorry, this is the public site, if you're familiar. We have two adjacent to one another. This is the public site. So Trey Genwright's here with Jade Consulting on behalf of the owner, RW Battles LLC, requesting a B2 zoning with conditional annexation into the city. You will remember this one that came to us, this unzoned property originally, the, and an MOP, and we have construction going on right now. You can see that. The only plans at this time, as far as building, is the Publix and the outbuilding you see, but there are other out parcels coming in with this, this, these lots. So it is currently zoned B4 within the new Baldwin County planning jurisdiction or district. This is a annexation with no changes to the current plans. It's a lot layout, everything else is the same. There's the B2 if we need to go through those. The, we've looked at this. Comprehensive plan is really the only question that, that I think needs addressing in our regulations, and want to point this out. This is a little sneak peek of, you should be getting a draft of our comprehensive plan for the upcoming meetings in October. So with the Publix, any comprehensive plan, you're always looking at where development's happening. It's unzoned at the time, but there was some nodes added to those, still kind of keeping the node concepts, but expanding on that a little bit. And we do foresee this as being a commercial node. So we, the B2 matches with kind of what's, what's already being built. See no problems with that annexation request. We do have one condition. We are recommending approval of this. We do have one condition, though. Currently, this property, these properties are not contiguous to the City of Fairhope. The next case is a piece of property to the north which is contiguous to the City, to the City of Fairhope. So for this one to be eligible for annexation by the time it gets in front of city council, that one will also need to be annexed in. So we can't annex a piece of property that's not contiguous. So any questions, I'll be happy to address those. And like I said, Mr. Genwright's here with Jade.
Any questions for Hunter at this time?
Nope.
Thank you, sir. Trey, do you have anything to add at this time?
Natalie, I would like to point out that all communications that we have received on any of that, any of the applications tonight have been forwarded to the planning commissioners if it was outside of the staff report. We have received them all.
Chairman, Trey Genwright, Jade Consulting. I'll always take a chance to talk. So this, this, this is the public shopping center that's been before you guys. Y'all approved the MOP and the site plan subdivision application over a year ago. It's coming near term on wrapping up construction. In the overall scheme of things, this will bring the out parcels under your purview. So site plan approval will then be able to come to you guys to review. It'll be a tax revenue generated for the city, and we think it's a win-win for the community. So we're here requesting your concurrence on that request. The property to the north is the 13 acres. That piece makes, this piece contiguous with the City of Fairhope that is being requested as B2 as well. That is a natural, and we have some room schematics of how the commercial center will actually expand in those tracks as well. And so those are, while they're not the same property owners, they are developers that work in tandem with each other with a track history, and so this is basically a project that will be coming together as one. And so that's why we're presenting them to you as initially, ultimately as one. There are two applications, but it's really the same, same, same group. So thank you, guys.
Any questions for Trey? All right, thank you, Trey. Again, this is a rezoning, so we'll simply make a recommendation to the city council. And they're asking for a B2 zoning, which is basically a retail zoning, retail or office, but concurrent with what they're doing out there, shops, go into and buy things. Anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? This is out on Battles Road and Highway 98. In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Commissioners?
Motion, Mr. Chairman. Case number ZC 2209, shop set Point Clear. I move that we recommend to the city council approval of this zoning and annexation and subject to either the property to the north being annexed into the city, which would make this property join the city limits, or the movement of a property line that would also accomplish the same objective.
I've got a motion to approve, subject to land being contiguous. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Hunter?
Thank you. So this, this follow-up is the adjacent property to the north, so kind of breeze through that. It is 13.3 acres, is also zoned by Baldwin County. You see it on the screen here. The zoning map is not up to date because we didn't have the, the county zoning map in RGIS information. The, it is currently two subject, two properties, no explicit plans on what to do with that at this point in time. Same chart as B2, same conversations with a comprehensive plan, and same map we just showed. So with this one, it is contiguous to the city, so we do recommend approval for a conditional annexation with initial zoning of B2. We do not have any contingencies on this one or conditions of approval that we recommend.
Any questions for staff at this time? Thank you, Hunter. Trey, anything else to add? All right, I'll go ahead in that case and open a public hearing at this time. Anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? This is the lot one to the north on Greeno Road of the item we were just discussing. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I've got a question. Go back, Hunter, again, the, the county, this was recently been zoned in the county?
Yes, sir.
RSF, RSF.
This one was RSF E?
Which is a residential family estate.
That's correct.
Okay, I got it.
Yep.
I got it, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any further questions? Not on entertain a motion?
I move, we recommend to the city council approval of ZC 2211, 18323 Greeno Road with the initial zoning of B2 general business district.
I've got a motion to approve, or to recommend approval to the city council. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, next on the agenda is ZC 2210. This is a PUD amendment. PUDs are considered zoning. Go again, on this case, we will not be making a final decision. We'll simply be making a recommendation to the city council.
Mr. Chairman, so this is a request of Eric Collins with SC Civil, acting on behalf of the owner, Burgess Thomason. Leah Thomason Brown, annual Daniel Thomason, request an amendment to the Montrose Preserve PUD, which was formerly known as the Thomason PUD. This is the third amendment, proposed amendment, which those, those are included with your packet. Any agent with SC Civil is licensed to, or approved to speak on this, as well as Larry Chason, with Chason and Earl Real Estate Brokers and Developers, as well as David Connor with Blackburn and Connor Attorneys. This is a case we've, we saw last year in essence. I'm gonna go ahead and jump right to the, there's no major changes to this. It was originally approved as an 18-lot residential subdivision. It was formerly a PUD that approved 77 lots. So conceptually, not much has changed. The request includes, to be short, is to provide two tangible things. One is to allow an option for lots four and six through six to be sold individually or combined and sold as one lot. It also adds five development phases. The entrance that is proposed off of Highway 98 has also been shifted slightly from what we've been told. That was ALDOT request to line up with existing median crossover. All, all the other things within the PUD, the setbacks, the buffers, the, the green space requirements, nothing has changed on that. So anybody that was questioning those things, this is a major, major change. None of those things have been changed. Just to kind of give you the, the two options, I know those are in the packet, but just to go over those, the option A, in phase two, which if I can point that out, that is this section provides for three lots, which totals 18 residential lots. Option B combines those into one. You can see the, the roads as shown here, that removes the road as well. That's only the slight change. And then when I say road, that's access to the lots. So brief historically, brief historic context, this began in 2015, and the original 77-lot PUD was approved in 2017. We kind of were, I tend to work on a, there's actually a, the science of muddling through. It's, it's actually a lot of, of public administration theory has been written on it. We don't reinvent the wheel every time we look at something. There was a lot of conversations, meetings in 2005 through 2017 to accommodate a lot of concerns. And, and what we received in that initial application addressed those. So the, you know, I think we talked about this before, there were some exceptions to our subdivision regulations for providing public streets and connectivity. That was to preserve some of those historic roads and trees and those sorts of things. So that was central to what we reviewed. And then into 2021, of course, with, I think everyone was here. Where were you? I don't know if you were on the planning commission at the time, but I think everyone else was.
I had just.
Okay.
Yes, I was here.
No, you saw it, council, but.
Yeah.
The Montrose PUD, Preserve PUD came through with the revised layout of what you just saw as the 18 lots. In March of 2022, we received a preliminary plat application for six lots. We turned that away because some of the conditions within the ordinance and approvals of both the planning commission and city council required a preliminary plat to be submitted that showed at minimum access to each and every lot and how those were going to be done. I'm gonna back up just a second to kind of go over the access here. There's many options for access. There were county right-of-ways, whether they're in the city, whether they're through easements. So that is one of the major things we were looking at, how we get that, as long as the intent of the PUD was being met. We approved the PUD conceptually. So the follow-up there was to handle some of those details and link in questions from multiple agencies. So on the screen, we do have that existing conditions of approval. Highlighted was the one that required the preliminary plat to be made. It's kind of implied that we, we kind of brought that in. This was, this was initially from our very first meeting in November of '21, this was discussed. It was in every meeting we had, it was in every staff report. You know, we did a very poor job of trying to hide it if, if that was our intent. I will say, and I want to be very clear, staff is still very much in support of this PUD. We, we like the solution. I think it meets a lot of needs. And personally, I don't, we don't see a problem with either one of these options. This is, this can be one big lot versus two big lot, three big lots is, is not really a concern. What we do have a concern about is, is actually doing a plan for all of these to make, ensure that those infrastructure, right-of-ways, roads, access is, is planned at one point in time. That was what we, talking with all of our other departments and some other agencies, that was the concern on this from day one. We still believe that.
Well, that's pretty standard, isn't it? We have a.
Yes, sir.
We approve the PUD at a 30,000-foot elevation, and then before we start subdividing things out, we require a subdivision.
Yeah.
Plan is to make sure everything works.
And we certainly allow phased construction. That, that's a reasonable request. Don't, don't have a problem with that. And then, you know, big enough and massive enough, we can actually leave some things to, details to, to come. But, and that's kind of what I'm getting at here, five development phases that anywhere from one to eight lots is a precedent I don't even want to begin to think about. You know, if we get a 300-lot subdivision and we break it up in 100 phases, that is not efficient use of our resources, and the effort that that takes to coordinate is really something that I don't think, you know, is seen. But coordinating that with our departments and others, that's something I want to ensure, and it's not an arbitrary thought. That first page of our subdivision regulations right here show the purpose of those regulations. You know, that's the effect of coordinated and efficient development of the City of Fairhope. The, the proper arrangement of streets, open spaces for pedestrians, utilities, firefighting apparatus, streets and other ways, installation of water and sewer and mains and piping, the wise expenditure of public funds. That's us. That's the staff. You know, I appreciate y'all volunteers, but taxpayers have to pay for us. Promoting adequate provisions for those utilities and requirements. So that's what we based our recommendations on from day one and still, still believe that. You know, you can see this is, we're kind of lucky sometimes in Fairhope, we have all our utilities in the same roof, and that's unique. We can go get a lot of things resolved, takes an effort, but we got utilities in Fairhope, Daphne, Riviera, AT&amp;T, all involved in this one. We've got things that touch Baldwin County, ALDOT, Corps of Engineers, floodplain issues, ADM. And, and what typically happens from a PUD to a preliminary plat, there's professionals hired that can go out and figure those things out, and we'll be happy to, to review those when they come in for preliminary plat. Just some examples. I mean, I don't want to just say no, I kind of want to give some examples of, of some of the questions that need to be addressed, but of course, that full list is in our subdivision regulations under the preliminary plat applications. But we've got common areas. The, the lots that are generated by this PUD are not matching the historic lots record, those common areas. How are these maintained? Who's the HOA? Who's the POA? Those are documents required in preliminary plat. Those extend past lots one through six. Those are shown in dark green here. You know, we've got wetland boundary, stream protections. There's a survey that shows that, but, and I believe that's what's right, but we actually require those documents and review those and let, let those smarter, much smarter than I am, take a look at those. Drainage, what, what is that gonna look like? You know, does that, is that a shared drainage that is required on one lot that might get out of the current owner's hands before we get a plan? Grading plans, how does that, to accommodate the access roads and drainings? What does that look like? How does that affect some of the other areas? Garbage collection, just sometimes simple things. You know, conceptually, we've agreed to have both in the 77-lot PUD as well as the previously approved one, a 40-foot undisturbed buffer along Greeno Road, Highway 98. That's, that's accommodated in their PUD, but sometimes the details matter. There's a, there's a power line there. It's shown in the survey right at the edge of the property line, which I believe that's accurate, but the clearing to accommodate that power line is wide and extends onto some of these properties. You can't plan anything there. So, and that, that doesn't follow exactly a straight line either. So when the preliminary plat comes up, it can accommodate where that actually tree line is and still provide the buffer. You know, we've got the right-of-way issues. We actually did receive this morning a request from Baldwin County to accept those right-of-ways. I think that is something that the city has been willing to entertain, that's city council. And, and we finally have that and can react to that. Haven't had a chance to fully process that, getting prepared for this meeting. But there's questions even on that. You know, in the title, there's a declaration of vacation of certain right-of-ways from The, very rough, this is not a survey whatsoever. We just kind of did our best to map where those right-of-ways were. It makes little sense to me that the county is giving us right-of-ways that may have been vacated. I'm sure there is a very clear answer why this is there, but it needs to be resolved. And, and right now, I don't have that resolution. And we can't sit and talk about every one of these things. Those come in with an application and it's clear at one point in time, then we can review that. And that is a document recorded in probate right now. The slide numbers are on the, the screen, book and page number. So regarding the option A and B, I think that is something we can accommodate. I can't remember if we talked about that during planning commission or not. I know we did at city council. And I don't, there was no concerns over that issue. So as long as the intent of the subdivision, the, the PUD is met, roads, access, utilities are all accommodated for, I think we have the flexibility to meet that. And I would say this is one of those things that administrative approval is for, because the preliminary plat would address what the lots look like. It would just mean I can approve the change to the PUD without having to start the whole cycle back over. So I don't think we really needed amendment for that one, as long as planning commission and city council agree. But other than that, I think staff still feels the same way we did back in November and recommends denial of this PUD amendment. This does not dissolve the 18-lot PUD currently on the table. They can still proceed with that two preliminary plat. So if y'all have any questions, I'm here to. So, if y'all have any questions, I'm here to.
I'm doing it.
Yes, sir.
Let me look at the, here in the packet.
Okay, so this, in the packet, what we included was the packet from last meeting. So, that recommendation listed a big string of conditions. That's what I showed back here. And I get how that can be confusing. That's this condition. These are the conditions that existed with the previous, with existing, currently approved PUDs.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
What is it that you think you would need to, that the applicant would need to do for this to have a recommendation of approval from staff? Specifically?
We could sit and talk for four hours about the potential scenarios.
You got to get us in the ballgame because I'm a little confused about it.
There's examples right there. I've showed a few of them. But the list under the preliminary plat application will give you a full list of things that we need to resolve.
He wants a preliminary plat like we require all the time when we subdivide a PUD. Every time we do a PUD, we have this PUD comes first and then we get preliminary plat approval and final plat. He's the same, he doesn't have.
And that's what you're saying is.
We don't have that. My interpretation of this, it's the only reason for this, logically, it makes sense if we're going to amend the PUD to try to put those options A and B. Don't have a problem with that. But otherwise, it's just to kind of remove the conditions of that preliminary plat to come in with one design for all 18 lots that addresses those main things. I don't agree with that.
We have, you know, we've learned through the school of hard knocks in the past about, you know, a lot of these things with the PUD. You know, for example, Founder's Place, you know, done by the single tax corporation. The pond back there doesn't have an owners association set up to maintain it. That's why we require owner association, you know, papers. And green spaces have been turned back to the city before where they, you know, supposedly a green space, but there's not an owners association. So, there are a lot of these things that we've learned through the years that, you know, they, a PUD gets approved. We don't have preliminary plat, roads is going there willy-nilly wherever they want. So, you don't have any, you know, any type of, you know, anything to look at, say, hey, this meets or doesn't meet the intent of the PUD. So, those are.
So, if you had that, then in terms of the two options, option A and option B, be more of the, more of something that could be just handled by staff?
Yeah. And I'll give, kind of, it's hard to go through because, I mean, this is something that I don't even know all the answers to because what happens at that preliminary plat? First thing we do is sit down with all of our other departments. And their expertise sits at the table and says, hey, you got to think about this. We don't even have all those people at the table in this one. We're going to have to get answers from Daphne Utilities. That comes in with a preliminary plat. And how are they going to access lot 14, for example? That comes down the second street right of way and we know that. Well, if lot three, I think it was said in the narrative that lots four, three, six could be combined with another lot. Well, that changes that into another's hands. If we know exactly where those utilities are coming, we can make sure there's easement provided for that. But if it gets into somebody's hands before the plan is in place, we don't know where they got to go. And then it gets into some problems and potential conflict. Then where are you going to go? You going to go out to ALDOT's right of way and put utilities in? They're not going to let you. So, the only option left is to go through the historic right-of-ways on the other side that we said we're not going to be disturbing.
Well, which now begs your question, and I remember somewhat of a conversation. And tell me again, in a platted street that was in this subdivision, why we're not utilizing those streets? Why are we not opening those streets?
Because there's no. We don't have those streets right now. We can't.
You don't have them right now, but you just said that there's a move afoot.
Yeah.
Why did, even with the county having, well, I asked the applicant that.
Well, I can.
Why do we not?
I can tell you easy.
Huh?
I can tell you easy. When we accepted the PUD, that's implied that whenever that's developed, we're going to accept the roads. We never accepted 100-year-old right-of-ways that have never been opened. That's not what the intent of this PUD. Why would we take something? There's, if, right now in this market, in the development of Fairhope through the years, if it's an unopened right-of-way, there's probably a reason. There's some challenges to it. Yeah. Why would we go in and open those up?
That's necessarily true in Montrose. Except for that there are a number of people that have got half of the right-of-way in their yards.
I think we're getting in the weeds a little bit there. I mean, the basic, the basic thing what we have right now is, this is not uncommon to any other PUD that we require. And they're not in order right now with a plot complying with what we usually ask for. And all we're asking is for them to do this one step and we're good so that we know what's happening. We don't want to give them a blank, like they're artists, so they can just go in and do whatever they want to do. A blank canvas, you know? And I think that's where we are right now. Otherwise, this is a great project. I think we're all for it, you know? They've been working together for a long time to get this done. But we just need this one step to be done. So, we're in compliance, we're a subreg and a preliminary plat that we usually ask for PUDs.
I totally, totally agree with Cory and it's kind of like, you know, the guy at the far end of the table down there says, if we don't do for one, we can't do for the others. So, are we going to start saying, you know, bring us your PUD and go for it, baby?
Right.
You know, once you got your PUD, we don't, we don't need any subdivisions after that. You just go for it, baby. You know, I don't think that's, that's how we can work.
But it goes back to the question, I don't want to beat a dead horse. If you're not the one to ask.
But if you're getting back to the PUD, I can tell you what happened on the PUD. I thought you were on the board then, but when we looked at this PUD, the applicant didn't really want to connect back there at the time. And the people back there didn't want to connect because had they connected, they would have had to have taken those roads to city standards, which would have been cutting down massive oak trees. And not one or two, but tons of massive oak trees would have changed the whole character of the whole neighborhood of that area back there because they would have had to have taken the right-of-way to 60 feet sidewalks on both sides. And it would have just changed the whole, you know, character of that Montrose neighborhood. And the applicant at the time said he was fine not connecting and none of the people back there wanted it to be connected. And that, that was where that came up with.
And I think the streets now, maybe those little small streets back there, you might get two bicycles on them. And to come to compliance, is it 18 feet? 16 feet? I can't remember.
50-foot right-of-ways is usually 20.
24.
24, somewhere in there, feet of asphalt. And then you do sidewalks, five feet of sidewalks.
So, now, so now you're doing a whole lot. And I think that's where what you're asking came from. They didn't want to do all that.
Well, we didn't have that request. And our request.
The community did not.
Was to not connect to those.
Well, I understand this, the community, the community might have wanted it, but at the same time. Let me just restate what our chairman just said, that the guy down at the end just said. You don't do for one, you're not willing to do for all and you don't start.
It's a PUD. That's why we have a PUD.
Well, I understand.
And anytime in the future when we don't want to cut down heritage choke trees and the whole community doesn't want to and the applicant doesn't want to, then we're going to do it for all, if it's in a PUD.
But you don't know that you're not going to do that right now either.
If it's in a PUD, then, then, you know.
It's got, do you see the streets lined up on this, on this plat?
Nope.
Do you see, do you see the streets for the access?
I don't see a plat. I don't see it. That's what we're asking for.
This plat?
Don't have a plat. We've got a, we've got a PUD. We don't have a plat. That's a consistent plan.
That's semantics. You've got, you've got an illustration right here. It shows you generally where the roads are going to go.
We don't have chat. We have absolutely nothing. We don't have a plat. That is not a plat.
Whatever. But I don't agree with you, but that's, you've got something that you're looking at. It's something that we've been talking about. So, what do you mean we don't have a plat? You don't have an official plat that's been surveyed. That's different than this plat right here. So, what are you, what are you, what are you talking about?
What I'm talking about is if you always notice that people complain about why aren't PUDs ever done like they were originally brought in, it's because when the final, when the preliminary plat's brought in, a lot of times it turns out you don't have access to lot number X because of a gully or a, when you survey some type of a wetland or you don't, can't get power here or you can't do this, so you end up with a T.
Lee, I understand that, but that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about trees and road and you see where the roads are going to be situated. And all I'm saying is, you don't know yet whether or not you're going to take those trees down in the first place to accommodate the access to the various lots in it. That's all I'm saying.
Okay.
And the question I've got is, why, if there's an issue with utilities, why are we not coming out on the main street? And I remember now that there was a request by the applicant not to, not to access main street. But if there's now an issue about utilities, the point is.
The point is we don't know if it's an issue. We don't know anything now is the point. That's what we're asking for.
Let me remind you of the previous staff report. We had some things in here. Those are shown conceptual. There was kind of four options for how access was getting to those lots. We didn't have the right-of-ways. We still don't, but there's, even if we accept the right-of-ways, that's going to take some time. Then there has to be an application of vacation. That has its own process. So, one, one, one option is exactly what's shown. You split the right-of-way. Some people get this, never cut through to anything else. Applicant gets half of it and can put the drive, whether that's a 10-foot, 11-foot asphalt, in that area. But then also utilities are going to have to get through there. But there was also options for, maybe we don't want to give up that in a vacation. That's council vote. I can't project how that's going to go. So, but maybe we're willing to do a hold harmless agreement similar to what the county's done with a couple of access to those lots. Or maybe the county doesn't give that. That was an option on the table at the time. It looks like what we got right now. I think they're on board with that, so that clarifies it. But is there already a vacation of those? Can we even accept them? There's a document out there. And then if none of those things could happen, we've talked about the other options from day one. They can put that access inside those lots through an easement and have a private drive, just like many other things are. They're not even in the right-of-ways. And that works out too. But that's got to be figured out and graded. And some grading on some of those turns may change contour lines to expand where you might need that easement through some of the existing lots anyway. That's what we were looking for in the plan of plat to address those things. That process will clarify all those questions.
Got it.
Any other questions for Hunter at this time?
I have a, not such a question, but more of a suggestion. I know in 2015, when Lee and I were here and a few others, if, if we have this time lapse of development, I think that it would be beneficial if we all had the original development plan that we can get everybody on the same page with so that we can talk about what was proposed, wasn't. We have the cliff notes, but a lot of people are confused on why we are at this juncture. So, sometimes I think.
That whole plan and staff reports in your packet, it's in there?
No, not, not this.
The one we did last year or the?
No, the 15th.
Okay. The 17. I believe that plan was in there. It's in there. I don't know.
Not in, not in this.
Okay.
To talk about when, when the commercial aspect was in development and then where we've gotten to.
Yeah, I don't think that has any bearing on this particular application.
Well, there were roads and there was access at that point. And then here we are now. There was, there was, that's why we didn't go to the main street.
Even if they gave us that, we don't have anything to compare it to. So, we don't know what they're asking for now.
Right. Well, we don't have.
And those didn't use the historic right-of-ways, so.
No, but I'm, I'm trying to maybe understand where, maybe where art's coming from, why the roads are this way, where I know from 2015 that there was a totally different development. And here we are now. So, there's a lot of confusion of maybe what is presented today and what's.
I agree. This is, this is kind of confusing. I mean, I, I don't want to waste the time really on anybody. Yeah. But I got to accept an application and process.
Well, we have guidelines, so let's stick to the guidelines of what we do.
All right. Any other questions for Hunter at this time? In that case, I'll go ahead if anybody wishes to speak on behalf of the applicant.
Mr. My name is David Conner. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. And I want to start by saying, I think we've taken something very simple and made it very complicated. So, I want to try and take us back to where we are and answer some of the questions that are on the table. In your application packet, or at least in the packet that was on, on the, on the city's website, there's this page that shows a 77-lot planned unit development that was approved in 2015, 2017. That shows the roads as they were going to be shown at that time, that was approved by you on this same 53.4-acre subdivision. That PUD was approved and there was no requirement whatsoever that a preliminary plat design have to be constructed and designed for this whole site. It was going to be done in phasing plans. What traditionally happens in planned unit developments is you submit a master plan. And that master plan becomes basically the zoning for that site. And you have to build the subdivisions that you ultimately submit your preliminary plat for in accordance with that master plan. So, on the first page of this application, you'll see the 18-lot subdivision. It shows how they are related to each other. It shows the common area where they're located. It shows the street layouts where they're going to be. It shows all the things that you normally see on a planned unit development. Very similar to the, the document that you all approved back in 2021. There are a few changes and really just some help and assistance that we're asking for. I, I want to commend you and the city council and everybody involved for taking this piece of property and helping the property owners in the area, not just the applicants, the Thomassons, but the surrounding property owners to address their concerns. There's a lot of things that were concerning. For example, the, the public right-of-ways and accesses that you all have talked about. And there was concern in the previous application that, that maybe this subdivision with this development would somehow be connected with those streets. Well, this PUD that's approved does not allow for connection to those rights-of-ways. It's clearly shown on here that there's not going to be any connection. In fact, we're asking that those rights-of-ways be vacated. As Mr. Simmons mentioned today, the county has now submitted some documents to the city for review to turn those streets over to the city. And what I hope will happen is that they'll be vacated and that will address many of the property owners' concerns in the area once and for all, that no one plans to connect and open those streets. Again, we're looking for assistance to keep this plat alive and keep it going. The last thing that any of us want to do is for this plat to die. You have a reversionary clause in your zoning ordinance, as I understand it, that if the previously approved plat is not acted upon, if we can't make this work, then it will revert by operation of law back to the previous, which is a 77-lot subdivision, which nobody wants. We don't want that. We don't think the community wants that. We don't think you want that either. So, we're just asking for some help to address some concerns and make this as simple as possible. I don't want you to treat our folks any different than you treat anybody else. I think y'all approve periodically three and four-lot subdivisions all around this city. I know we do in Spanish Fork, which is a city that I represent. You approve subdivision lots based on the size of property that you have. It may be 100-lot subdivision. It may be a three-lot subdivision. A PUD could be a 50-acre parcel. It could be a 1,000-acre parcel.
We do minor, we do minor subdivisions for four lots or fewer when there's no infrastructure added.
Okay.
But if there's infrastructure added, we always require a preliminary plat.
No question.
Because we all love this plan. Nobody here doesn't like the plan, but what if the road doesn't work?
No question. So, let me drill down.
And that's what we, I agree that we're making the mountain out of a molehill because he just needs to get the preliminary plat and we can approve it. Because what if the road doesn't work?
And let me answer your question. The same issue you have with any subdivision development you have. We're not asking to avoid submitting a preliminary plat to you. We're asking avoiding submitting a preliminary plat for the whole 53 acres at one time that requires us to design and pay the engineering and construction design cost for the whole subdivision. We want to do it in phases, just like many other subdivisions are done. So, when we submit to you phase one and phase two, we will submit the engineer drawings, do the subdivision, construct the required public improvements for that phase. When we submit the subsequent phases to you, we will submit a preliminary plat that has all those construction drawings and plans that are required for that phase, just like you do in multiple issues of subdivisions all over this city. So, we're not, I want to take that off. We're not asking you to avoid submitting a preliminary plat. We know we have to do that in the process. We're just asking you to let us submit that in phases as opposed to being able to have to design the whole site for the whole PUD. And so, that's one of the changes that we're asking for. And it's, and it is an important change because of the cost that's involved in that to our, to our clients. If we can do the first two phases, which are relatively small, public improvement structure, infrastructure would be very helpful to us. And so, that's. And so that's one of the biggest questions we have. It's not to avoid submitting a preliminary plat, but to allow us to submit those preliminary plat in phases as you all are used to seeing over and over for every other person that submits to you. The phasing plan, I believe originally had four phases. We're asking for five. And we are asking for something for a lot, for the second set of lots, lots three through six, which is a little bit different, but I don't think the staff has any, any objections to that, and I don't think anybody else would either. And I'll just be perfectly honest with you. We've been informed that if Dr. Booth purchases the phase-two lots, which were lots three, sorry, four, five, and six, that he would prefer that those lots be just one lot. And so to keep us from having to come back to you again, or Dr. Booth having to come back to you again to say, no, we really don't want to have three lots. We want to have one, we're just asking for you to give us an option, to select that option. When it comes time for us to submit our preliminary plat for that phase, we'll either submit you a three-lot option, or if Dr. Booth is buying it, we'll submit you a one-lot option with the preliminary plat for that phase and for every phase that follows. The other issue is that the right of ways, as we mentioned earlier, they're working on those. We have proposed potentially to have private streets that would be maintained. That would be part of the approval process. But the main issue here is that the property owner is, is not asking for anything that's unreasonable, not asking for anything that's unusual, not asking you to skip any steps. We're asking you to help us phase it so that we can bite this apple one bite at a time and develop this property. We have the potential here to take what is a 77-lot subdivision and make it into an 18-lot subdivision, maybe even a 15-lot subdivision. And I think at the same time, address all the concerns of the neighboring property owners as to access. So the main issue is allowing us to use a phasing plan, allowing us to submit preliminary plats for each phase or multiple phases absolutely before we get a building permit for each phase, approving the revised phasing plan, the optional plan. And then the other one was, there was an access change. The design, the discussion without that, it felt like it was better to line up the entrance with the medians on 98. And so those are basically what we're asking you. Many of these other issues or concerns that are being raised, I think, have done nothing but to confuse the issue. I want to address this right-of-way issue. There's a document that shows that was concerned about existing right-of-way and whether or not it was vacated. Well, that document's been recorded for 25 years. That was there when y'all approved the last PUD. We believe that that vacation is invalid, and that's why the county's going through the process that it's going through now and asking the city to go through that process to vacate those streets once and for all and be clear about that. And so all of these design questions that everybody's concerned about is no different from any other development. When we come in here to submit a phase plan or a subdivision for phase one or phase two, we will submit a preliminary plat application that meets all of your requirements for that subdivision at that time, and it will address all your concerns. And if it doesn't, we would expect your staff to say, no, this is the deficiency and this is what you have to fix. What we don't want to do and what is a negative impact on us is to have to submit a preliminary plat for all 53 acres upfront when we don't need that to be done and don't have an intention of doing those phases at the moment. The plan is for it to be a timed phase development over time. All right. Preserve the right to come back if we think something is, but I think that's, it's a stop if that's okay. And if you have any questions, be glad to answer those.
Any questions for the applicant at this time? All right. Thank you, sir. All right. This is a public hearing. Wait a minute. Oh, I'm sorry.
Hey, David Deal, there's C. Sybil. I'd just like to state for the record, I've done hundreds of PUDs. I've done dozens in Fairhope, where Mike lives, Firethorn. We got the PUD approved, master plan. We brought each phase in with engineering plans and plat. I have, to my knowledge, in 37 years, never been asked to engineer an entire development as a condition of a PUD approval. So I just wanted to get that on the record.
This is a public hearing. Would anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? If you'll come up and state your name and your address for the record, please.
My address?
Address.
Martha Rester, 23073 Main Street, in Montrose. But y'all have dedicated, y'all have name changed it to Fairhope. So I'm in Montrose, right across the street from where this development is. My concern is, and as Holly stated, this goes back to 2015, and I haven't followed it, but I've looked at the plats and the documentation was very difficult to read some of the mapping. Will there be access to this PUD via Main Street or not? That concerns me. So I'm not sure the answer to that question. And I understand your request for phase development, but the topography from Main Street to where you're talking about going...
Please, ma'am, please talk to the...
I'm sorry. The topography from Main Street going all the way through is extremely treacherous terrain. So my fear as a neighbor is they will do phase one, phase two, phase three and go, whoops, we have no way to access the last three lots that are sitting on Main Street because of the topography. So I've stated my piece. I don't know if that's... The traffic on Main Street is horrendous now, and we don't need any more. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak to this item? Hi, yes, sir.
Good evening. Gerard Januzzi, 10 Via Maria. It's the Trentino PUD, which is adjacent to the subject PUD. Going from the 77 to 18, 18, lot 18 is now occupying what was green space. That green space is what is adjacent to the Trentino PUD. It's unclear to me from the photographs that were presented, how lot 18 is actually separated, I believe, by Rock Creek, not the development, the creek itself. So the three questions I have is, and I'm, and I'm, I'm going to assume, excuse me, I'm going to assume phase five, from what I saw, which is one lot, will be lot 18. It'll be the last phase they do, as proposed. So how is lot 18 going to be accessed? This is a question. What will be the buffer footage for lot 18 south, which is adjacent to Trentino? And I'm assuming the 40-foot buffer on the side of 98 will still be maintained. And the last question would be, what impact or remediation will need to take place as a result of whatever the impact will be to Rock Creek? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Judy Barlow, and I live at 7144 Chapman Street. It is a small street that comes off of Second Street. I'm speaking on a letter that Debbie Quinn sent to you guys. She is out of town. But our concerns are, and we thank you, we thank everybody for working with the community on preserving our neighborhood, our historic neighborhood. But if we open those three lots of record and we don't do the engineering for all of them at one time, we're concerned about stormwater. Again, the topography of the area, we're concerned about stormwater damage from water, egress, ingress of the stormwater, electricity, roads, et cetera. We're concerned about the right of ways again, to make sure that, since we don't know if it's going to be county or city, we're still concerned about that as well. So thank you.
So thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Kim Dye. My address is 23, I mean, 20389 Main Street. This ordinance or the sign was across the street from where I house. My question, I really didn't have a lot until I sit here and I listen to what they want to do, and it is confusing, and I'm concerned about the Main Street access as well. My concern is doing it in phases is not a total plan. So we start in the first beginning, as this, as the man said. And I just am concerned about the entire package. And only because I've watched it over the years that we don't consider the whole package. I understand there might be a huge cost, but what is the cost at the end? What if they don't fulfill all the 18 units or property pieces that they want to? What do we do? What happens to all that land? What happens to all the utilities? I guess I, if you're looking at that much land, what's the whole package? Can they finish it? What if they don't finish it? So I'm not great on developing, but I do have concerns from start to end and not knowing those answers. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wish to speak to this item? In that case, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. Yes, sir. Come on up. We've got the questions. But let me add that the public hearing is closed at this time.
Okay.
But you, you are different since you're on the, since you're speaking on behalf of the developer. You certainly have the right to... Let me, let me, we had five items. Access to Main Street.
Sure.
The topography, how do you know it's going to work if we don't, you know, plan with all of the lots? How will lot 18 be assessed, accessed? Buffer to the south in part? And then, you know, if not phases, how do you know the items will work out? Questions that I have listed.
So to address the Main Street, there are three lots that are accessed Main Street with a common driveway access, which the county has approved. In fact, this planning commission approved that three-lot subdivision back in, when was it 16 or 17? And it was never recorded. That's the only thing that we'll access. There is, is it Ledyard Street? The right of way's open there, but as you can see on this plan that was approved last year, there's no access there. So the only way anyone could try to add that access is come back and do another PUD amendment. So to me, that's not really a question.
Come back? I'm sorry, David. I didn't hear.
The only way that someone could try to access through Ledyard is, number one, they'd have to come back for a PUD amendment. Number two, that's spent a lot of money because the topography in there is terrible, which is why we didn't plan to do that. Lot 18, the only access it will have is Highway 98, which will require a permit from Aldat. Obviously, if they don't want to give one, then I guess lot 18 is useless. As far as a buffer, we didn't have one on the previously approved PUD, but if that's a concern, we could add a buffer there along those three or four lots at Trentino. So there's the, we keep talking about engineering, the whole thing, and I'll repeat again, I've never, ever had to do that ever on any PUD that I've ever done. The PUD's a master plan. Engineering is addressed phase by phase.
Have you ever done a 18-lot in five phases before?
I have not.
I mean, and, and the thing is, if you understand the staff's point, and I'm not, I, I love the plan. I don't have an issue, but I like to support the staff and their concerns. But, you know, Firethorn was, you know, flat cotton orchards and pine plantations, you know, with all due respect, this property's, you know, not. And that's the concern we've had, is I've sat here, and I know you do more subdivisions than I do, being a professional, but think of how many times, you know, we've seen things that, you know, when you get there, all of a sudden, you know, I mean, we've had sidewalks that we haven't been able to put in because they didn't meet ADA, because of elevations. We've had roads that haven't been able to be connected because of elevations. We've had, you know, lots that haven't been able to be accessed because of utilities and right of ways with DOT. And, and that's what, what staff seems to be concerned about. I mean, I don't know what kind of detail have to go into, but, but that's, I think, the issues that, that staff has. I mean, certainly when we're out, you know, Highway 104 on, whatever that is, Lawrence Road, and you've got a flat field of 300 acres, you know, that's one thing. But even in those plans, you know, Fox, what's that one? Fox Run? You know, the original water retention was phased for every single phase out there at Walmart. The intentional, you know, the initial water retention was set up for every single phase, so we knew everything would work. Even though we've done it in phases, we knew the water retention would work. We knew that access and ingress and egress would work. And I think that the concern that the staff has on this is if we do it in phases, what if phase two doesn't work after we've already done phase, you know, after I've already done phase one and had yourself in? And, and it's, it's great to say that you just can't sell the lots, but in the real world, that's not how it, how it occurs with private property rights. And I think that's what the staff is concerned about.
Well, the approval of this PUD doesn't create any lots. So there's no lots that would be able to be sold. The, the lots aren't created until, number one, a preliminary plat and engineering plans are submitted, approved by staff, your engineer, our engineer, and this body. Then it has to be constructed according to those plans and then final inspection, and then the lots are created. So there's no, there's no danger of any lots being out there that aren't able to be engineered or accessed. If, if we design phase one, for example, and we go to design phase two, and it's, of course, there's the engineering solution and everything if you've got enough money, but if phase two couldn't be designed, then phase two never happens. The approval of this PUD doesn't create those lots. So phase two would never happen. There again, if we do phase one and phase two, and phase three is not possible, then phase three never happens. You've got a 30-something acre piece of property that's just going to be sitting there. And the fact that there's an approved PUD doesn't create a lot and doesn't create a danger for anyone. So the, the submittal of the plat and the engineering and the review by staff, their engineer, all that is what will guarantee if it works or not. It's, it's not something that we normally do at this point.
Any further questions for the applicant at this time?
At the last approval, I mean, the very first condition was a preliminary plat with a, including the, all the acreage.
Yes.
There were no objections to that. Why, why the objections now?
I didn't notice it personally. I didn't notice it. It's not something I'm used to seeing.
This, this condition is not, this is why we're kind of, there's a lot of confusion because as I go back and do due diligence, this condition has been there for a while.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Like, so, but it hasn't been done. Is, is it almost like we don't really want to do that condition? We want to bypass that condition and go forward? Is that what we're saying on your end? Because it's been there.
We're not wanting to bypass anything. We're simply wanting to do it in, by phase. So we will do it correctly, according to the sub reg, proper engineering. We just want to do it by phase. And, you know, as Art always says, you know, do it for one, you got to do it for all. And I'm concerned about a precedent here for PUDs in the future, that you have to engineer the whole thing. I mean, it'd be great for us. Well...
And on the flip side of that, I think I'm worried about creating a precedent with PUDs to allow 300-lot subdivisions to come in under 100 phases, because three-lot subdivisions are exempt from a lot of the requirements.
Yeah. And, and in a small town, so, so the preliminary phase, the preliminary plat, with that condition with a PUD, you're thinking that it's okay not to draw out the whole thing in this situation? You feel comfortable that it's okay not to have a complete plan with all the details and information you know about this particular area, not cookie-cuttering? And you, you feel comfortable with skipping that condition with this project, not knowing all the things that we can get entangled with from the details that we know? And I'm not an engineer, but...
Yes, because that's what we always do. We always have a PUD master plan. We always come back with phase one, or maybe phase one and phase two. A year or two later, we come back with phase three, phase four, whatever. That's the way we've always done it.
Do your clients typically not want to know what the costs are for those future phases, though? I mean, there's some preliminary...
I can't, I can't hear you, Hunter. You have a few microphones.
There's typically some preliminary planning done, so we know what the cost is. And if I'm investing in something, I'm going to want to know what that spending entails. So looking forward is typically something to... And the condition doesn't say everything. At a minimum, access to each lot. We need to make sure access and infrastructure is able to get to. So, so, there's a lot of options in that preliminary plat that come, can come in. You know, if, if, if it doesn't, it might not make sense to have a detention pot here. That, that's a, there's options out there that can be done and, and say, here's what we're going to do. We just made that happen in the PUD. We looked at some drainage and some shared, even though that was multiple phases.
Yeah, and I remember.
That was done in the Fly Creek PUD.
And I remember specifically.
Drainage was done for multiple phases.
Specifically in the club.
Yeah.
We, they tried to do the same thing, where they tried to give us a little thing, and they tried to do this, would not let us know what the last phase, but we said no to that because we wanted to make sure that we knew what we were getting into, to do it correctly and to fall into our subreg. So, i- is there a reason why you guys don't want to, besides the cost? That's the only reason, is the cost?
I mean.
To be honest?
Well, to be honest, so, we engineer for a living. We're happy to engineer the whole thing.
Okay.
I mean, that's how we make a living.
Got you.
The client is wanting to engineer Phase One. They've got a buyer that would like to do that. They've got, potentially Dr. Booth wants to buy the one parcel, Phase Two. So, they would like to engineer Phase One and Two. Get that going, build it, get it finalized, sell the lots, and then look at engineering the remainder.
All right. Anything else somebody has to add?
And I'm just going to hit some more, it's just.
Go ahead.
I really would like to point out.
Tell her your name, Larry.
I'm sorry, I'm Larry Chason. I want to point out something that makes this particular project unique. I mean, ordinarily, you would have somebody bring in a contiguous 58 acre parcel to you, and you talk about doing it in phases and subdividing it. And that's, that's typical, is it's a big old piece of land. 120 years ago, Cyrus Sibley laid that thing out, and he put all these right of ways in there and created these blocks. Those phases that you see are basically like Block 23, Block 24, Block 25, and they've been that way for 100 years. Prior to us starting all this with the city, the family could have just sold those blocks when it was Zoned R1. They could have just come in and, the plat's already on record. You could have just said, Dr. Booth, we're selling you Block 23. Front's on Highway 98. I mean, what got this mess started is trying to come in here and make everybody happy about whether or not the street was going to go through the main or whether we were going, I mean, what we were going to do. All, you know, it's just, we are willing to comply in every way. It's, this thing has changed. When we came in and got the first 18 lot plat approved, we didn't know Dr. Booth might want to buy that piece of property. That was a change. I will say, there have been telephone calls to me that have said, well, if Phase One sells three houses, Phase Two sells to Dr. Booth, we might want to just buy the rest of it. As the piece of property gets smaller, it gets a little easier to deal. I mean, right now, dealing with 58 acres is a lot of money. But I want to go back and just say that the confusion that we've got here now is because we tried to come in and have an orderly development, and we're still there. We're still saying we're going to do that engineering. But we, if we do it over here in an area, we, we got people wanting this now, and I'm sure that someone will want the rest of it. And when they do, they will hire an engineer. They will build according to this plan that we have submitted, or they will have to come back in here and ask for it to be modified. That'll be on them. The family is, just wants to sell this 58 acres that's in five blocks and has been for 120 years.
All right, commissioners? Any further questions, concerns, or not all entertaining motion?
Let me ask Hunter another question. Hunter, if, if they, okay, there's five, there's five phases. If the number of phases were significantly less, would that make a difference?
Every one of these PUDs, we have to look at individually. So, there's some, there's, there might be a PUD out there where this condition wouldn't be a concern. So, when we see conditions, we see existing things that are a problem. Our goal is to meet the intent of the PUD. If these six lots were on the other end, at the end of the line, for instance, might not have a problem with that because selling those off, developing those would not block access to the rest of the property. For that access, for those easements, for that infrastructure. And, and we have had many conversations on PUDs that come in with a short goal and then come back and have to amend everything. It winds up in, maybe this, this bottom two thirds winds up in somebody else's hands, but they physically can't accommodate the code plan because they can't get the access. But then they're coming in and amending that change. That, that is not efficient. The intent here is not to drive up cost, do full engineering on, on every detail, but those basic elements, we've got to make sure access and utilities are provided to each and every one of these lots. And that's what's going to require some engineering. I, I don't know how we can otherwise accomplish the goals of this PUD.
Yeah.
I don't, if we're going to start accepting PUDs with the idea that a piecemeal of it has a vision and we'll come back and, when we figure it out, then that needs to be stated on the front end that doesn't have any other lines or uses, you know, that, that's planned on the front end. And then we have full control over that in, in the future. That can be another PUD. But I, I, once we see this PUD, the way I review that, we're going to be meeting the goals and intents of this PUD. If I see challenges, then it's my job to make sure we address those challenges so we can do that. I, I mentioned in the staff report, if there's some things on preliminary plat that, that makes sense not to address, and there are big lots like this, I think, I think reasonable planning commission is going to, would be willing to accept waivers, maybe. For example, if those were presented and they made sense. There are, are instruments in the regulations that allow that conversation to happen. But to just say, we'll amend it if it doesn't work, I, I can't get behind that conceptually. That's my job. I, I mean, there's some decisions made outside of the advice I've provided you.
All right. Which others? Further questions about all entertaining motion?
I think I saw a handout in the audience, Mr. Chair.
It's closed.
We've got to move on to some point. We've got to.
Hunter, real quick. I understand what you're saying. Is there a possibility of you having an, at least one more meeting with that developer and have you identify the bare minimum that you want to see in order you feel comfortable that this PUD could be implemented?
Yeah, I mean, the access is the big thing because access theme rolls. What we, while we said that condition explicitly, minimum of access, because we can look at, that's going to, that's going to force some ALDOT questions. Is ALDOT going to require a deceleration lane? That, that's got challenges.
Well, we found out tonight, the access of Lot 18, that's not on there, and it, and it may or may not happen. So, there's a lot of.
But even accessing Lot 7 through.
14.
14, you know, that, that lining up conceptually makes a lot of sense. But, and, and David mentioned this in the last meeting. ALDOT will not give a permit at this stage, but, but the preliminary plat is a heightened thing for them where they start really kind of giving some time, and we have a line of communication with them where we start, what are you going to require here? Are they going to, we, we probably wouldn't, I'm, I'm guessing, I'm not an engineer, but this wouldn't do a trip generation where our subdivisions require traffic stuff. But they may for accepting deceleration lanes. That's kind of a curve coming around, you know, down the hill. That, I, I don't know what they would require. That's but one example. And that, that could ultimately change the shape of that lot. Just Lot 6, if a de-escaleration, and I think that grade's pretty steep right there. You got to come across the power lines. That's an easement, you know, the issue that has to get clarified. So, just, just seeing if we got access from the ALDOT. I, I think conceptually, it makes sense. Details matter. So, does that, I, I, that, and, and then on top of that, we're, we're not doing traditional right of ways in this access. So, if we were doing traditional roads, 50 foot right of ways, we have comfort levels. There's room for gas, whether they might want that, but certainly water, sewer, foam, electrical. We don't have that in this one because we're, we're all working toward keeping the roads clean, you know, keeping them to not the city stage, but we might have to have other easements, you know? So, Riviera is going to, I know they require an easement around every lot. I'll see those on, I'm assuming on our sewer. Daphne Water may have the same thing. Where are those going to go? And that's the problem with developing, in my mind, the first six lots because you block access to the rest of those things. And, and while we're wanting to make sure is we've got access to those other, those other items. So, and, and kind of grading that out on paper to get those accesses in, once we figure out where exactly they're going to be located, starts to provide those answers. I mean, that's, and then if we see any other major red flags, we can do that. But right now, we don't know. I mean, we're just kind of, we can sit and talk theoretically for hours about what may come up.
Well, but it, it seems like you may not have to go to the full extent of you would normally go to with a plat in order to satisfy some of those concerns. And that would certainly decrease the engineering cost involved in preparing a plat that just satisfied those bare minimum of requirements that you have. That's what I'm throwing out as a suggestion.
I mean, that, that's why we wrote it that way, you know, that, once we start that review and we see, all right, contours have to change over here, that might be in the floodway. That might require a bridge. There might be other domino effects that we have to address. And it, and it may, it may change the actual PUD design. In fact, they might say, well, that doesn't make sense. Let's rethink this. And for all we know, that might, you know, it might come back in off another access. And that might make, make sense for, for them. So, those are the, those are the domino effects that kind of have to get done. And afraid if we get piecemealed, we won't be able to address those things.
Well, but again, it seems like the compromise here is to go ahead and deny this request with, with the understanding that there are some further discussions that could occur between your department and the developer that might decrease the engineering costs that he's concerned about with doing a full plat.
And that, I mean, that's already, I mean, that's a good point. It is outlined in the condition of approval, that it just says at minimum with the preliminary plat shall provide street access. So, that, it, so I think it captured it.
And they're trying to get all those answers. I, I can't provide those.
Okay.
And that's going to be with E2 outside AC Utilities. So, that's what happens in the, in, in that preliminary plat. And then we sit down and formulate our conversation for at minimum the internal departments.
I'm waiting for a motion now.
So, yeah, I, I'll make a motion, and I'm, I'm just, at this, I, once again, I know y'all have put a lot of time and effort. This has been an ongoing process. But I, I just don't think that with this particular property, this particular acreage, that we should go along with this amendment. So, I'm going to make a motion to deny.
Recommendation.
As, as a recommendation from the staff, a denial.
City Council.
No, hold on. What did you, what are you saying?
I'm just trying, Ally's going to be watching this on video as well.
Okay.
Just to be clear, this is a recommendation of either approval or denial to the city council, which will ultimately make the final decision on this amendment to the PUD.
So, you get to vote on this again, Corey. Can you get this again?
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's going to come to council. But, but, you know, we got a lot going on right now, and, and I just think it's not very prudent to do things out of order with what we have going on right now in this city. And our goal, it, it was read at the beginning, the reason that we have these subdivision regulations is to protect the morale and, and, and other things, morale and, and the greater good of the community. And I think if we go out of order with this project, it sets a bad precedent, and it may put us in harm's way as far as what we have going on infrastructure wise, just to be honest. With that being said, I'm going to go with staff recommendation to deny of this CZ 2210, the amendment with approval of council. CZ 2210. I recommend a denial as stated by the staff that will then go to council for another vote. But at this point, I believe I'm putting a motion up for denial.
I've got a, a motion for our recommendation to city council to be to, will be the staff recommendation of denial. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, when do, if, if this is denied, when, when can it come back?
They can submit the next deadline preliminary plat.
The preliminary plat?
Preliminary plat, yes.
So, that.
I mean, if, I mean, if there's another idea to amend the PUD, that can come as well.
Okay.
There's no, there's no.
No, no timeframe for them, though?
No, this doesn't kill it.
And I will say, if, if, I will be in support because this is, killed almost a year of this two-year window. I'll be fully in support of extending that time. If the council can do that. I haven't checked into that based on this. We deny the, the recommendations, but extend the time allowed to accommodate these goals. I'd be happy to support that.
All right. Any more further comments? All right. So, I'm going to ask if you vote to Corey's motion, you'll say aye. If you agree that the recommendation to city council should be a denial, you will say aye. So, all in favor of the motion to recommend the city council to deny, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to the recommendation of denial, say nay. All right, the recommendation will be unanimous to the city council to deny. All right, at this time, Chris, do you have something to read for us to go into our executive session?
I do. Pursuant to Alabama Code 36 dash 25A dash 7, subsection A 3, based on discussions of potential or pending litigation, my suggestion for a motion to be called by the planning commission on September the 8th, 2022, to go into executive session to discuss potential or impending litigation. I'm offering this declaration in opinion for the purposes of the statute as a licensed Alabama attorney. I will further advise the planning commission, if deliberations begin regarding a particular action to be taken, that we come back for formal action to be taken at planning commission outside of executive session. I don't anticipate any action being necessary after our discussion on executive session. And that is my declaration and opinion this evening.
And I need a motion to go into executive session. Do I have a motion?
I move.
Say, Art, in your second round. I've got a motion, a second. Any further? All in favor to go into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And where are we going? It is 7:05, and we are, do I have a motion to reconvene our meeting?
Adhere, reconvene our meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Since there's no business of needs to be brought up at this time, Hunter's going to do that via email, the appointments to go over the amendments. He's going to send you all appointments via email, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.